Thank you, colleagues. Meeting has been pulled through our first order of business. Please leave.
I'd like to begin to do the fact in the United States of America and to the public awaiting the standards by addition under God in the physical with the regulation just for our.
How much longer?
No. I'm going to keep talking about this, so clarity.
Speaking as my people, I mean, why should you be the only one to...
Because I'm the mayor, okay?
Okay. Why is it the mayor?
I am the mayor.
Boy, you're also six feet away from my office.
First order of maintenance, food, and I think agenda, recommended approval.
I'm not sure that's approved.
I'll second. We have a recommendation and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Both? So carry. For your comments, John, I'm not going to let anybody get within six feet of me either. Somebody have a case, read August minutes of the last meeting.
Yeah, we got a big correction on page four. It says, "The motion was made by Compliment Number Will Cox and seconded by Compliment Number Will Cox."
I believe I made that second.
One page four, thank you.
Any other corrections? Get a recommendation.
I'll make a recommendation.
Second. Second recommendation, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Both? So carry. Thank you. Recommend a list of claims for August 2020. Any questions, any claims?
Motion to approve the second.
Second motion, a recommendation and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Both? So carry. Accept the financial statement of General Liquor Water Sewer Funds for Disbursement Latches for All Funds for August 31st. Make a moment to table. I have a recommendation and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Both? So carry. COVID-19 CARES Act update. You see that we have the same station as another CARES meeting tomorrow, which I'll have to attend, and they still leave dispersed, but they haven't used their own money that we dedicated to the county, City, International Falls. Little Florida contributed to that fund, but we are going to have applications as we fight tomorrow, which that will be gone, not all of it, and there may be requests for additional monies. So far, we've dedicated, I think, we depend on 10% of our CARES fund, is that correct, Sheriff?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Does a lot of the CARE relief money that we received, we've only dedicated 10% for small business relief so far?
Correct.
So we have additional money, we can contribute if the applications for CARE relief and the other members of the colonies and other cities care to do that, we do have money available to do that. So we'll recognize that at our meeting, and there'll be an update at the council meeting. As far as... As far as the COVID thing, I'd like to read a few things here. I, first of all, want to thank all the employees who worked through challenging times and complying with all the safety rules and navigating through this pandemic, understanding that all businesses have had to make tough decisions in order to survive. And I thank all the businesses and employees for providing a positive experience to our visitors and to the community this summer. And thank everyone for the hard work to keep the community safe and businesses viable. Recognizing that this is a very stressful time for everyone, and everyone has to go through it.
Could you please talk into the microphone, I have a security.
Okay. Would you like to read that again? I'd like to thank all the employees working through the challenging times and complying with all the safety rules and navigating through this pandemic, understanding that all businesses have to make tough decisions in order to survive. And thank all our businesses and employees for providing a positive experience to visitors to our beautiful community this summer. And thank you for everyone for their hard work to keep our community safe and businesses viable. Recognizing that this is a very stressful time that everyone has had to go through. I want to thank everyone personally, thank you. Recommend approval of the resolution 2020, 10 CARES Act expenditures, I think you have a list for them, that shows where the money is, have been allocated, rest roughly $25,000, and where the expenditures have gone, we have substantially more of that left, the largest portion still left hasn't been expended yet. I'll make that motion. I'll second. I have a recommendation and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Both? So carry. We have to kill it with the end of the year to disperse that amount of money that can given to us or use it ourselves where necessary and within us. Does that have to be in by the end of the year? Yeah, any expenses that we've occurred up to the end of the year, so if there's ongoing expenses, definitely will be secured and asked for the defendant charges are for that you're looking at, or they're spending the money. Does this all go on into 2021? No, this is good till the end of the year. Actually, it could have to be a CARE relief, could have to be an extension of the program. This program, I believe it's correct, isn't it, Sheriff?
Would it have to be expensive that it began to occur before November 15?
November 15. So we have to, November 15, this is for the money till November 15, and after that, if they so choose to, the federal state government's give us some more, we have a number of programs. Right now, this program will end November 15, and we still have a great bit of the money left, using it appropriately. Okay, so that's here as an interesting, and... Okay, they have a tax levy of $200, recommend approval of the tax levy. Sheriff, is that... Last year, $239,000.
So our $239,000, that was the last year. Yeah, we were able to use the same tax rate, but they have the catch of the net tax capacity that far as a little bit without those many of those taxes. So that number doesn't raise the tax rate at all, that's the catch.
Okay. So anyway, the tax, make a motion for the tax levy of $250, I think it's $253,000, isn't it? I'll recommend approval of the 2020, there, $0.9, post tax levy of $253,000. I'll second that. Have a recommendation, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Both? So carry. Jen had, will not be able to attend due to the conflict of school meetings, and she will attend next board meeting.
Jen's here.
I'm here.
She managed.
Okay, great. I see you made a profit, anyway.
Yeah, we didn't do too bad.
Considering Rainier Days was gone.
I was just going to say, without Rainier Days, and last year was a great day for Rainier Days, so... Yeah, I was really happy to see that the numbers stayed, you know, take away Rainier Days.
It looks like you were about short by Rainier Days.
That was the point.
Now you're going to do about 16, I mean.
On Rainier Days, I think.
Yeah, the whole weekend, you could do 16.
Yeah, we were around 16, right.
You're about, you're about that short, so next year you look really good. I was in love for this one.
Well, it's only day eight, but we're doing, I would say, just as much above average, so...
Do you have any issues with the cabin itself as far as mechanical or anything like that?
We did have a slight issue with the POI system adjustment address, so...
And employees paying attention to the COVID instructions that are, as far as we have, so...
Yeah, we had a meeting and made a sign on that, so we were aware of it.
That's good. Right now, for the audiences, we're just a little under about half of what we made last year, and basically, the two, the Fourth of July weekend in August, I mean, Rainier Days have been really two different, had they been gone and scheduled, the income clearly shows that we'd be right on the same pace as last year. We're still about, what, $7, $18,000 for the years.
And we'll see, we're going to see one drop with the pig roast not happening in September, but I can't really have that many people around.
All right. Anything else, or? Get a recommendation and...
I'll second it.
Have a recommendation, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Both? So carry.
Thanks, John.
Is Nick here? What kind of issues you have here?
Still kind of working on the personal water lines, we should have that stuff figured out by the end of the month. Over the weekend, I was gone for a few days, the guys had to prepare some stuff, but they did find a water weekend proceeds, but we'll get that addressed in the week or first part of next week. On that, just seasonal stuff, if I do hydrants, kind of go northward, so it should be in snowbirds to start the event.
Seeing that for the hydrants.
Yeah.
That drain, I see that drainage that you did is working real fine, cleaning up that one ditch and paid attention to that.
Yeah, totally got it.
So... Any other issues coming up other than normal operations, good hydrants?
All of them, I see, my next animal too.
I went down and looked at the boards at the rate, yeah, and they're going to need a lot of work to follow straight out, and because he went screwing at the top, and I don't know what's going to take to get them back there again, probably a couple, maybe screw clamps, maybe might get a pad there, there's pretty good in that pot, so.
They were not to do that with plants last year when they were put in, and then they just pop. They're not, they're not meant to be outside, they're in the works, just on the hot back of every season, but we always have that stuff before we start plugging. So if you start to do that now, we're just trying to keep popping, where it gets, you gotta wait for the cool off, or the fire to block out.
And was that the company who sold that we hired?
No, 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 the boards came from my hall, they're meant to be indoor boards, that's the only thing.
They should have been screwed in, right?
Not the tops of them, they were already a piece of them, they were already sections, so all that top stuff was already put together. Only part that the company did was their work, the footings and the base, they had nothing to do with boards.
There are screw holes in the fire glass, but no screws in.
Because of the, because of the management top zone.
Well, a day's work, whatever it is.
Yeah, every, every year, we attack that part of the board.
Well, it can't be every year, because we just haven't.
Well, we've had to live the old ones, too, we always had the message of boards, everything shifts.
Before the weather changes too bad, I mean, this is the whole staff we got now, but we still have time, but you know, when you have to address, and get that ready, and there's probably some other stuff around the way that you take care of, so make sure that, yeah, those are dressed and updated, so...
You going to put new rails in there?
Yes, yes, they're shot.
When you say rails, what, what rails?
Office desk on the back of it. The rails, really the front interior.
How about any painting we're getting to the end, is there any painting around?
Bob actually, Bob took the time, Bob supplies, and he did a bit of the part with the deck over, actually, really good.
I got the other one, I want to do it. Give that a tour. I did a two tone, I got a darker on the rails, and then darker on the bottom, and looks good.
Yeah.
Like I said, there's probably a lot of the both side painting that you could do yet, if you capture the right day, so whether there are fire hydrants, or something at the liquor store, or a hockey rink, or here, wherever, let's make sure that any painting that has to be done has been addressed and adjusted. Anything else for you? Okay. Oh, I forgot we're on the maintenance, I did contact Min dot about the streetlights out here, as everybody knows, I think everybody knows, originally, they were supposed to be put on in the bridge project, but because they were so hard to get, they transferred that part of the contract to the Highway 53 project. Highway 53 project, then ordered the lights, and they told me right after Labor Day, and I noticed some barricades out there, some markers, so I do expect the lights to be in service this, this month, they said they would, that was the first thing on the agenda after the first, you know, lights, so... But I do expect to see them, and as you know, it's getting targeted by 8:00, so those lights are supposed to be scheduled right after Labor Day, so I'll check that, maybe we can have an update for you at the council meeting next week.
We did get our sign out there, didn't we, which is Chaplain?
That's been there for a couple of years, and I'll recommend it.
Yeah, and then it'll also be lights at Chaplain, too, so the Chaplain and, and this.
Yeah, that would be on that, or that can do.
Okay. If there's nothing else, then that's in the motion.
Oh, we don't need a motion.
I understand. The next day, order of business sent is to the...
Oh, the water rates.
Oh, the water rates, yeah. We got a meeting, and I read, I read here a synopsis of why we should be having a meeting with International Falls. Hopefully, we'll lose some good... I think we're getting well overcharged with the circumstances, but they, they hold, they don't have purse strings on that one, so we'll have to see if we can talk into anything. If not, they do have an election coming, we may have to bring that up as maybe something that one of the candidates can bring into their agenda. I think there's some possibilities of possibly a water district or something else that would give relief not just us, but maybe give the whole city and the whole area. That's something we'll maybe talk about at the same council meeting, or at the same meeting with the city. We probably need a motion, we'll need a motion for the council to meet with the city of International Falls.
I'll make a recommendation. Water rates, Sheriff. Suppose we have to make a recommendation tonight for the scheduled meeting with International Falls, the water rates. I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Both? So carry. For the audience reference, our water rates doubled in the last three years, so we will try to do something about it, but they control the water, and I have to, like I said, there's a couple of courses we may try to do, kind of hard to work with, so we'll see that. Well, then, next order of business is the Lewis Street boat launch, we did receive a lot of comments, and we have a list of all those, and I think if we just looked at them over, I've read through all of them, and I know there's some questions about the council not being there, there are open meeting odds there, and the most we could have had at that meeting is two council people, we had arranged for two council people to be there, medical issue showed up, and so we only had one council person there, instead of the two we had scheduled, so apologize for that, but it's something that happened. But the comments, it was well attended, from what I understand, and we received quite a few different comments, and looking over them, I don't see any that, that can't be addressed, and we got good answers, so... Well, you were there, if any, on the list of comments that we got, if you can see anything that's worth shattering, that's something that we can't figure out or answer.
No, I have, no. It's just a matter of having it down for the citizens during the second vote, and then we implement it, and we will look up the vote, and we implement it, and there could be signage coming in.
I see Sheriff, Sheriff Ball, I'm interested, Sheriff Ball, we had her name on some of her comments, so we can address those, I don't know, we did...
Now, I have a whole list of questions.
Yeah, I got, I got, I got the list, and, and I said, you're the only one I know for sure to have, has the name, that other names were on the comments. Sheriff, did they have this, names of anyone, or they just ran a gun? Some of them did, I know.
They, the committee members wrote down comments when, when the people talked to them, when they were looking through the plans, so, yeah, they just wrote them down. I sent them, it's...
Wait, wait, wait. We won't speak over the turn here, you raise your hand, I'll give, I'll give everybody a chance to talk, we're not going to be jumping around, and we'll give everybody a chance. What we want to do is try to address these comments, I don't know whether you, whether we should go to them here or not, or wouldn't you want to address them, that's why I'm saying if they were addressed right, because the person that made them certainly do that. I think what we're going to do is maybe move through some of the comments, and just put our perspectives on them as far as we think we can do, or how we're going to address some of the concerns that some of the citizens have. You know, one here for the trees that should be plotted on actual locations of the drawings, I don't know if that would be necessary, because they're clearly marked out the area that would be disturbed, everything in that area is going to be disturbed, as far as I know, there's not going to be a tree disturbed over by the old landing itself, so that, and the other comment was there a large floating dock for more boats? You know, that's something if we decide to make it larger, we could. You know, we've had talked in the past, too, I don't know if we can do more docks, we had talked about adding some docks to the existing pier, floating docks, what we got as prices on docks, they had three or four, I forget how many numbers it was, but three or four, I think it was, to the existing pier, just for floating docks, but that, that'd be more for, you know, not, not more for launching, it would just be more for people coming in and out, but we have to do some removal of some of the old piers and stuff like that, so we hash that around, and try to get votes, and that's, votes and docks, but not in removals, or things like that, so... I, I don't know if it'd have to be any larger, because, you know, it just, it's a boat land, a launch, it's really not a boat landing where they're going to tie boats up to it, it's just a matter of putting the boats in, taking them out, so I can't see a larger floating dock being necessary, there's a handicap ramp that goes to it.
Is this going to be your over dock than what we've gotten out, when you want to move your boat, you can just pull it right alongside?
If you looked at the design, Bob, the floating dock is out there, and the ramp runs in right alongside, real similar to, you know, every other boat landing where the dock runs right alongside, the floating dock runs right alongside the ramp, so you pull in and help hit it centered on the trailer and stuff like that, that, that's the design. I know the other thing was a handicap parking close to the ramp, I do know, I do know, we'll take comments later, John, I'm just going to go through the questions and say what we think there is, and then we'll, we'll open it up. As far as handicap parking close to the ramp, I do know we have $103,000 left that we could do some work on DeLuce Street, basically, on, I guess it's the south side of Sharon's property and Woods's property, where there's gravel parking there now, we could probably subcut that and lap top that, that would be another project, though, you know, 20 feet wide, so there would be additional parking there, which would make it closer for some, if you just make some of that as handicap, you know where I'm talking, I think everybody just right across from the bank building there and that, so... So I think we can get a couple places closer for handicap accessibility. Current boat ramp is unsafe, launching both, I guess we know that. Project aims to bring more traffic to an already congested area of Rainier, I don't see that being congested down there myself, I don't see the congestion, traffic flow would be such that they come in one way, it's an active group design, so they come in one road and back up and go out, and then basically pull straight out and come down the street, so I don't see any congestion there at all, you know, I mean, I don't know how many boats they anticipate launching in a day or a year, but I don't see it being a real congestion area, nothing like we have down here, because the existing one is, is the, all the other things that are going on, other than Sheriff's business, or Sharon's business, I don't see any, anything else going on down there. So I don't think the congestion is a real issue. And try and, Wilbur or Todd, any, any, you see, I guess, you see, I don't have to be the only one talking here, if you guys see something. The other comment was...
The only thing is, who's going to enforce this?
What was that, Bob?
Who's going to enforce it, I mean, I've fished for many years, I know that these guys...
Enforce what, Bob?
All the rules and regulations we have on board, but I know that these guys, they're not going to park all the way here, they're going to park anywhere they can, leave their outfit to leave, and that's the way they are. You can't, Bob.
Well, that, that's a concern, Bob.
I fish hills, and I fish roads, and I've fished everyone, I see these people, they park their boats and stuff anywhere they can, they're lazy.
Well, we can put signage up, and...
That's nothing. You've got to have somebody come enforce it. And the boat is in total way, a wall in total way. And that many will get tired of coming out here, you'll say, you've got this handled all the way.
Well, first of all, I, I don't know, again, it'll be how many people are using it, the amount of volume is using it, obviously, there's designated parking, once you start parking in the area, I don't think, if we have a designated sign, I think that most people comply. You know, what can I say, if people park, they think they don't park there, something we'll have to look at. Let's see, what would be that? The other one was the day use only, I think that's a, that's a good idea, I don't, I don't see us having to have, because I do know in the other parking lot, some guys will park there for almost the entire year, or the season, I don't think we have to have overnight parking, these people are going to go to use it, yes, if they're going to use it, they can use it, they use it for a day, day use. What's your comments on that, anybody? Okay. I think I explained it, well, we had a question, they proposed to it, they wanted to write a council up there, I think I explained that, they wanted to know wakeable buoy, that would be... And they have a concern about minimal lighting, I think the lights can be on the timer on that, you know, like a photocell, and, or something like that, if the lighting is going to be an issue, I know John had mentioned, once he had issued the lights from their railroad, and, which would be a lot, a lot.
What was that? I just had problems with the lighting.
You, you mentioned about the railroad lighting and that, so we, we could need to put the lighting, if there's lighting, and yes, it would be on, they could be on timers or minimal, I don't, I don't think, I guess we need a whole, I don't see people landing in the dark, and stuff, it just don't happen.
We don't like it on there, which is a lot of people.
So, I can see that with that Voyager dark sky, I think we can try to comply to that as best we can, uh, which I don't, I don't see being much of an issue. And overnight stays in the parking lot. What do you guys think about the overnight stays in the parking lots? Okay, so that would eliminate any cars that, that would be here overnight, people walking around in the dark. If, if they did come in the dark, they can't, they can't stay, so there's no reason for it to be, uh, after government. Okay, well, that was the comments. Oh, Sharon had, had some. I'm going to go through them, Sharon.
Okay, can I, you know, you...
Sharon, I'm just going to read your comments and then, and then we'll reply to them, and I'll give you a chance to talk.
Could you please speak into the microphone?
Yes, I will, sorry. If I, if I do again, speak up, I'm glad. I don't see people turning around, Sharon, like you're, you're saying, on your property, parking lot, because what they'll do is come down the street, pull out and back up, Sharon. I, I don't see that happening myself, because if I was to put a boat in, I certainly wouldn't drive you turning around in a circle in front of there, when you've got a perfectly used driveway, you can drive it in one way and out the other. You drive up and back straight, and that's the way it's designed. I'm sure anybody that's driven, uh, any kind of trailer at all would execute it that way. And, uh, as far as signage, yes, there'll be plenty of signs that will, you know, dedicate where the, for that. As far as park, parking in front of the riverfront signs, yeah, we can, we can put up a parking area, that's not an issue. I mean, I mean, it's a concern, but it certainly can be handled with a sign. As far as eminent domain, taking your property, no, there's, there's no reason for that, there's plenty of property there. There'd be absolutely no reason to take any of your property. You know, any lighting, like I said, will be minimal, because if we're, if we eliminate overnight parking, nobody's going to come in here in the dark, you know, so we can do away with that. Speeding in the area, uh, north Duluth, is that the piece right along? Where, where are we talking, north Duluth?
Well, they, they, okay, so they come, come down the whole stuff by John and Sue right there. They speed along there, we've got dogs there, we've got children around there, and I took down a tree.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't think there's going to be any speeding there. First of all, if there're boats and trailers, there may be some speeding, but I doubt if we're done with a boat or trailer.
There's a lot of cars that...
So, I just, I, I just don't see anybody speeding with a boat, trailer, after they launch to get out there, or even bringing them. They're going to come in there and swing out and back in. I, I don't, I don't think that is a concern that you'd have to worry about. Uh, and then the drainage, um, you know, there is in the design, uh, there's a culvert basically right under where the boat landing is going now. They're going to come up the street roughly fifty feet, something like that. Uh, put an elbow in the line, or a catch basin, when I say a catch basin, one that's not sticking up, uh, like a manhole. And then there'd be a forty-five, sometime a degree, if it's a forty-five, or twenty-two degree elbow that'll bend that pipe and will come out, uh, you know, in a different location for every way. So, the drainage is not going to be affected. Matter of fact, the county's going to assist us in correcting the damage, or drainage on that. Make sure it's done, you know, because it drains that a lot of water from, uh, the street here runs through there, so that's what we're taking care of. So, that's your concerns.
Well, no, I'm trying to stop you.
Yeah, all right, we'll get, we'll take hers, and then we'll, we'll...
There's one point I'm trying to get to, okay?
You're going to have to speak up again.
I said, there's one point I'm trying to get to here, and Sharon had brought it up to me. Um, where the car, you know how they, they have those great big pillars that would, like, keep people, keep people away in the car? When I first moved here, I had a great big tree that was on the city property between us, and a big pole that was meant to stop people. Somebody ran it over while I was living there, there was a blind spot from the tree, so I paid my own expenses without any help from the city to remove it, so that they wouldn't be a blind spot, because they were coming around. So, my, my problem is this, every July first, people park wherever they want on my property. I've got vacation rentals, they can look right at the windows, they park wherever they want. So, I want to make sure that there are block, a block of things that I should not have to pay for, that keep people from parking in front of there. Okay, because they're never going, they're going to ruin my view, my picture, you know? They're going to ruin the view of my visitors there. And I'm going to tell you about every July first, I have to call Sheriff's Department, and get people removed, because they tell me, oh, this is city park, city park. There was no city parking until I removed the road, road car, and until I made it. And so, they require my property in front of the city, and they just are ignorant, and they just park wherever they want. And this happens all the time. And then my other thing is the lighting you're talking about, when they're coming up. People will back their vehicles up to pick up a boat, and where do you think the lights are going to go for their headlights? Right in my place.
Well, I, I don't know what to tell you, Sharon, like, uh, Sharon...
No, and tell me that you're going to put someone in there to keep them from getting, because you can't put up lockades. Then I may ask if there's a different way, a place you can put it, because that's not fair to you. For example, I bought that place for the, the lake, for the view, okay? How much worth life have been there to make it pristine? And if they now, if they deep out that, and it's wet, whose yard is going to get that, mine? So, if you don't know what to tell me, then you might want to reconsider where you put it. Because if you can't make those little changes, make sure that's not going to happen, what am I supposed to do?
Well, I, I don't think there's going to be a problem with the people getting onto your property, because we, the way, the way to, the way to design is, and I looked at that real extensively, that, uh, they'll be going up, up and down, and, and as far as, uh, we could lay maybe some of them curb, you know, the, you know, cut the corners short, some of them, uh, curb stops, curb, curb stops.
Well, no, I don't want just curb stops, I want, okay, so the first time, I just brought this up, now it's on record. The first time is when that's up, and that's in my vehicle, or my property. I'm going to come out to the city. Because you can do it with the possibility, and you did not waste any extra money, put those things there for protecting my property from people backing into it. So, it doesn't end up being a liability to you. Because I'm not going to have all my insurance get raised, and not be able to have you have people backing into my home. Because that will happen.
I, uh, I, I don't think it will happen, but, but I...
You could do something. City could have sworn to do something there, make sure that doesn't happen.
You know, when I look at this, Sharon, I think you're worried about the inside corner. I, I'm not sure where you're talking about.
We're on the front yard, I mean, I don't have, there's not much...
Well, your, 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 your front, your, your front yard, it, it's possible we could put, run a curb in front of the front yard, uh, and, and around the corner, something like, you know? But I'd have to look at that. I, it, it's plenty wide, I don't see it...
That's what you think, but I've watched them doing, I've watched them right on my yard right now. And if they run, so I'm going to, I, I know I'm trying, like, okay, I park my yard, there's plenty of that's in it, because they're not paying attention, if they use the trailer wrong, I'm not going to lose my insurance. I'm going to come out to the city, because I asked you to make sure I'm protected.
I think you've got a viable point there, but I don't think anybody could be backing this.
I've seen it, I've seen it.
How, how could you see, where they back, where, where are they backing up, Sharon?
I have, I have people that have been staying with me, and we have a huge gathering, which I fell into a couple of times while I was off the job, okay? And they have trapped their trailers, and they have that on my property. So, what I'm saying is, maybe you have a more viable area that's not going to upset everybody so much, or I'd like to cut those big blocks, and I should not have to pay for them, because I had paid for city stuff all along. I cleared where the old sidewalk was, got no help from the city. I cleared out trees that were in the way, I cleaned up glass and metal, and made it into a beautiful place. I don't want people backing up into my front yard. And if they are, you guys need to put something like this part protected, it's not that much of sense.
I, I agree with you, Sharon, so I'd have to look at where your concern is, but like you said, whether we have to put up some kind of fencing, or a curb, or some kind of obstruction, so it don't obstruct the views, or, you know, but yet, designate that, so, you know, a lot of times you put up simple little things, they're called volleys to keep, you know, so you don't hit something, or run around the corner, and things like that.
And just now, they run towards it, and all the things were put there. I have wooden pedestals there, with reflected light from them.
Yeah.
And a huge tree, and they hit both, they knocked down the, the wood with the fluorescent light. People pay attention, and I want to make sure that my property's...
That's your, that's your concern, and we'll look at that, and, and make sure that the traffic, the signage, as far as, put the signs up, so they don't park in front of your place, and, and your big concern is, and that, your, one of your other concerns is that they don't shortcut the things and turn around on your property. So, we'll have to see what we can do, do with that, that's legitimate, but, uh...
That would be fine, I mean, I just, like I said, I want to make sure, I mean, I worked really hard to make that beautiful, and there's not cluttering.
All right.
But I want to say this too.
Yes, okay.
I also care about my neighbors, and if they have discomfort, and it's ruining their view and, and the way of life they're having, if there is that too, maybe there's a better place to put it.
Okay, Sharon, please, wait, I, I got it. We'll look at you, make sure people don't, we can see what we can do, and be something that we can work out there. I see John has his hand up. John, let's see if I can find your comments. I, I know, I don't even know if I have, oh, yeah, I read your...
I don't believe it.
What's that?
I didn't see any comment, huh? Any comments?
Well, I got your, better, there's an email.
Somebody quoted me. You said, oh, I said, I said, okay, I want to ask you a question, a clarification. You said that, um, areas, um, inside where you had marked out will be disturbed, disturbed. What's that mean? You said that in your comments, or...
Sorry, what was the question again, John?
The tree areas, the places that you had marked, that some of you seen in there, marked out. But the area within that was going to be disturbed.
Right.
Yeah, was disturbed. All those trees knocked down?
Absolutely.
Yeah, all, beautiful oak trees, all those beautiful oak trees, mature oak trees.
Yeah, it's, I, I don't know how many there are, and where the offset, I can see them right there. So, it looks like, I don't know how many there are. I see somebody tied ribbons on it, how, how many were there? John, how many are, did you know, how many there are, did you count?
Yeah, well, people don't know. People don't, people don't know. They've been cut down all those trees, and I don't know how many over there, seven oaths.
There's nine, there's nine, there's...
That is...
Okay, there's, there's some right there, I can see that, because of the, we put out stakes, it's designated, it showed it on the plans. So, that area in there, just beyond the fence, a lot of those are going to disappear, but there are going to be some left. There's also going to be some additional plantings. If you looked on the plans, there's going to be additional plantings put in to, to restate that...
You never answered that half, but probably half the time, just so. Will you, the city, as project owner, comply with the city's own, um, ordinances, including the zoning ordinance?
I, I'm sure we could apply, uh, comply with everything that's necessary to complete this project. We're not going to do a half-assed project, or try to, try to run something that's not compliant.
Sharon, this is rookie, this is rookie stuff. This is a travesty, that the people do not, have not received better information than you give us.
How many trees are there?
Eight trees.
Eight trees, very small stuff, huh?
Well, we're not talking about eight or more.
Listen, hold on. Any, John, yeah. We're going to conduct an orderly meeting here, but a person has the floor, and I'm going to allow them to talk for a short period of time. I'm not going to cut you off in thirty seconds or anything, but we have to respect everybody's rights to say what they, uh, they have to say, and, and the other person. We're not going to be interrupting anybody here, or gaffe you, and you just have to, you don't want to be gaffed, and nobody wants to be gaffed. So, John, you have the floor. What, what are you talking about?
I was here, uh, last week, uh, last Tuesday, and, uh, it was, it was terrible, it was pathetic. Because nobody would answer any questions. There were a few members, there was one council member, I mean, for some reason, we didn't want to have a special meeting. So, that the council could be here.
Well, I think we did exactly what we wanted, John, I think, you know, how, how you proceeded, you wanted the meeting, and...
I just want to comment.
And we wanted comments on where, what you see you don't like about the project, or, like, Sharon's, what, what her concerns were, or, or these other persons, whether they're going to have lights, or that. And so, we can address those comments. Because you don't want the project, doesn't mean we have to address it, say, okay, we're not going to have it.
No, I'm just...
I don't know what kind of answer you're looking for, but if you have a legitimate construction, uh, question about that, whether we're going to cut some of these trees, obviously we are, because the stakes are out there. But whether we're going to cut the trees over there, obviously we're not. We got drainage, so what questions you have?
The LCNM, the LCNM.
What is that?
The CCMR, where you have the money.
Yes.
Or you're getting the money.
We have the money.
Yeah, well, right. But anyway, uh, they said, the woman said, the executive director, said that, uh, there shouldn't be public meetings. Even though this whole thing happened, both focus, because the governor had signed an emergency bill for giving the money, it was just, this is just a bit of...
John, I know we've talked about this several different times, how Mr. Trump grabbed his hand up.
Hello, part gone here, that I've been enjoying for over seventy-five years. And you guys have clients to destroy it. You don't think about it, you don't ask people, nobody gets to say anything. You'll just come in there with your equipment, one of the trees down there is marked, our governor's name. That tree is over a hundred years old. It should never be cut. None of those trees should be cut. That's a nice little park. Don't screw it up. You don't always have to be doing something because there's money there, or something like that. We don't need another marina down there, or a boat landing thing. That's a high tree. Don't do it. Sometimes you guys get government money here, and you've got to get in there and get some of that. No, you don't. But you're sure for the people that live there, and have lived here for seventy-five years or more, and we know something about this community, and it doesn't belong to you. If someone does, they can really change it, unless you check with us. Where's some money? You better get that in your head. And watch the mumble up there, and wait for you can't even hear you, that is disgraced and it's gone right there. At least learn how to run a meeting. We have a right up here to hear every word you've got to say. You don't mumble off to the side.
I, I don't think...
What is so, 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 Sharon?
Yeah, but I, I don't think you have to get personally, you know, anything to this. If you oppose this project, that's fine, obviously you do, I don't think you totally understand that, because like I said...
Yeah, if I oppose a project, that's fine, if you oppose it, do it just if you're that well, please, anyway. Don't do it. We don't want that project over here.
Apparently you don't, obviously the programs don't, but that's not, you're not the only two that live in this community. So, thank you for your opinion, and we'll adjust. Uh, Sue, you bet your hand up.
Yes, I have several things to say. The first one is, is there are five residences on Duluth Street and Reynolds. One of them being Sharon, and the rest of us along the street. There are seven or eight on this street, that would be directly impacted by... There are seven or eight on this street that would be directly impacted by this particular plant, okay? Now, what I'm saying to you is, if I'm John Dole, and I'm driving into town, I'm going to come and I'm going to turn on Pine Street, and then I'm going to go in here so I can wash my boat off, and then I'm going to come on here through the alley, and then I'm going to go all there and go all the alley the other way, then I'm going to turn around and I'm going to back my boat up there, then I'm going to come back up Luth Street, and then I'm going to come on here on the street, and then I'm going to park here, and then I'm going to walk between Kimmy and Mark's house and the other residence where my office is, and then I'm going to walk down there. Now you tell me that's not congested? That is most God-screwed awful planet on earth.
Well, Sue, first of all, you don't want your boat out of your base species before you put it in the water. Your base species is going to be located in the parking lot, so after they launch their boat and go fishing or whatever they do, they're going to come out and have the opportunity to swing down this street here, come in and wash their boat off. So that, and so you're coming in here, drive around, go in back, that's not going to happen. They're going to come in and drive, turn right here at the bank building, the old bank building, swing around in front of Sharon's balls, back in, launch their boat, pull out, come down County Road One, or whatever it is, and then come to the parking lot. That's what we develop, there's nobody else that would do anything different.
How come, if there are all these residents at the Luth Street and Pine Street, how come none of those residents, with the exception of Mark the Sarge, even knew anything about all this? How come your secret committee that did not put minutes on the website, that did not post their minutes, that was not open to the public, how come all that was placed behind closed doors until such times you felt, oh, that you need to let the community know about? This is what happened. We, we want to know, everybody on these streets want to know, because it directly impacts our lives. It significantly impacts our lives.
I don't-
We, just like people down there, we-
Listen, you want our national, you want our national integrity, what?
No, I don't mind your answer, I'm asking you why you didn't do any of these things.
I was going to tell you, but since you don't want an answer, fine. Yes.
I just wanted to make comments about the increased congestion, that you had made a comment that was potentially not being an issue.
Can, can you speak up a little bit? I have a hard time.
Okay, so I just, I wanted to bring up the point that you had brought up earlier about not placing a safety issue or just a congestion issue with adding this boat landing down here. I've been gone for, I'm a twenty-eight-year resident of Rainier. I've been gone for five years, this is my first year back, and I can say without a doubt, it feels like Grand Central Station now compared to five years ago. So, with that being the case, adding a boat launch that is not farther from the lake, that's closer to town, will indeed bring more congestion to this little quarter-mile area, not only from this direction, but from that direction as well. And I think that that's something that we need to consider, especially since, you know, walking a lot around the community, which I do a lot, there's a lot of people that graduate here that are just locals, that are not here to do anything, and they drive like idiots. And I've seen a couple close calls, and I think it does bring a congestion issue to an already small area that receives a lot of traffic.
The, there's no denying, there's going to be some cars going to know that boat landing. But where the existing boat landing is now, that is the primary congestion right now. It is totally unsafe, totally, almost impossible to launch a boat by being right now. Anybody that's tried-
It is unsafe, and I don't think you find anyone that agrees with my mind, and it needs for, they don't need a meeting, like, just for quiet access or whatever.
In my, in my comments with the head of the DNR's boat landing operations, Scott Killings, he's very aware of this boat landing on the end of, or end of, end of the street here. He knows what a poor position it's in, it's just terrible, terrible position. He knows where this other one is, it's a much better improvement. It's a good stop all the congestion, it certainly would have moved some of that this way, but it's going to be much more operable, much more sensible, and-
I don't think anyone disagrees with all those points. I think, I saw the difference, they're, they're beautiful, but I think what's not being said is that there are a lot of people that feel like, yeah, it's a great plan, but I don't know how I feel about putting it there.
Well, in, in answer to that, we did have a committee that went around, was that the six, I believe six, was that correct, six locations? They went around, checked every location in the city that was viable, and, and they, they checked everyone, and it was a consensus of the, of the committee, what, how many people in the committee? Ten? Fourteen? Fourteen people. And it was unanimous where the best spot was, all of it. Is there going to be a little issue with it? Yeah, it, it's not perfect, but I don't know if there is an unregulated anywhere. So it was the best spot we had, that these people, fourteen different people. We absentee ourselves from that, so I wouldn't have any biased decision making decision. So, Sharon, please.
Please, please, don't get it all so weird.
No, no, you keep, you keep talking, talking, John.
John!
You're a winner.
John, please, I respect your opinion, I've given you a chance, when you raise your hand, I give you a chance. You can respect somebody's opinion, even if it's different than yours, okay? That's all I'm asking. Are you, you have a-
Probably not, but we just want money.
Okay, well, thank you for your comment. I, you know, as I was just trying to explain, it was a committee that looked at all the sites, and this would add the least, least congestion and least, least problems.
I, there's one more thing I want to add, and then I'll be done. One of the things that I run into at the meeting, and I believe I brought this, I think his name is Tom Sordi, and not my command before, um, was that, you know, part of the steering committee that they have these members of, I asked them if anyone had bothered to do a little factifying mission, other than just finding the proper site, in terms of reaching out to the community to find out what they felt about it, and I asked if they felt the thing that was part of their responsibility, you know, the steering committee, and they said, one, I said, that's not my job, and then another one said, I talk to people. So there really was no, like, any kind of, like, statistics or whatever to back up to, that they brought to the meeting with them to show that they had publicity for it, which I think would have made a lot of the arguments here, maybe a little bit less so in my mind, if you could prove or have those things, but I just, I thought it was disappointing that they didn't do any alterations. And I think that would have been an important part of-
Well, I do, I do know maybe nobody talked to you, but I just know some of the committee members talked to other people in the community. We urged them to do that, I was saying, well, would you guys come up with any, talk to this guy, that guy? We, we talked to the local residents and-
I don't necessarily, yeah.
So, obviously they disdue, but again, you just, you, so, this has been going on for over a year, so, obviously, we, we tried to reach out.
Excuse me, nobody ever reached out to me, nobody ever reached out to John, and he lives right down there, and we live two doors from Mark the Sarge, who was on the committee, he didn't come to us, thank you, listen. We found this ball out, just through the usual gossip and this and that and everything.
I think-
There was no attempt, I don't believe. You could go talk to every one of these residents in all these homes, and you will find out that they didn't know anything about this. So you apparently, I mean, this is our residence right here, this is where we live, this is a residential area for us. And the residential area down there on Main Street, you were going to take the parking and park all of the front yards right through their doors, and you paid attention to the information that that was a residential area, they did not want that there. If you guys want to have all that business down there on the lake side, go for it, but we don't want all that foolishness up here.
Okay, thank you. Take it one more time.
You got one tree down there, Mark, for cutting, and you're rolling on it, I assume that's, that's how it's cut this. Please don't cut that tree or any other tree down there. That's a nice park, been out there for seventy-five years, and you don't have to turn into something else. Leave it alone, please.
There's traffic, there's people here.
Can I, can I just say something? Um, I've heard my opinion seven times, I've roached the landings so far this year, the most boats there has been there, cars, is two to three.
Exactly.
The thing is, do we need another landing?
No, we don't. Fair question. No, we don't. I have asked for the DNR on many, 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 and they said, no, no.
So, so, Charles has a hand.
Just so you know, I'm, I'm not a resident, although I have a property here, so I will vote, but I, I, how things go is important to me, and, and I do have a concern that, that I, and I've just tried to follow things very closely, I do have a concern that we didn't get a very good sense that there was a lot of work that went into whether Rainier does need a boat landing. And a lot of work went into deciding the best place for one. And, and, and it would seem that you'd want to have a targeted user of that landing. I mean, I think most of the folks, if they want to run kind of falls and their boats on the cradle of their backyard, they're going to take it farther up the lake just to avoid the big water and sand and paint. And, and, I know the landing that we have now has been used for years, and, and it was used a lot more before there was Tilsen and, and Roach in particular. So anyway, it does seem like a big expense, and I understand that some of that's covered. On the other hand, you guys, I'm sure, are aware of maintenance that's been involved in the ramp that we do have, and dogs. So, you know, just thinking of kids, this really doesn't matter for me, but we'd like to do the things we have to do and not be doing a bunch of things that maybe we don't have to do. So that's my thought.
I think a little history, I mean, Sue, that, you know, I think we can all agree that that boat landing is in probably the worst spot we could have, the existing boat landing is probably the worst spot we could possibly have it right now. And it's also tied to the pier, the existing pier, I mean, it's joint ownership because of the funding and everything else. And part of the situation is, is before you could eliminate that boat landing, you basically have to have another, we don't have to have another one, but that was the essence of the, of the ramp. We'll build you another one, and then, then you can eliminate that one. And so therefore, boat landing. And how much it's going to be used, that's waiting to be seen. Obviously, big concerns are congestion, everybody worried about that, well, if they don't use it, obviously that problem goes away a hundred percent. If they use it, I think we designed a great traffic program, so I don't think it's going to be an issue like people think it is. So I, I can't see it being a problem either way. If they don't use it, everybody's happy, they can use it, we've got a way of handling it.
I'm just going to say one thing here. I walk by, I'm at a river, it's over there where Jason Short lives, there's a dog there. Something regular built it, spent a lot of money, is never used.
That's a fishing dog, people sit there and fish on that dog.
I don't believe it.
Yes, they do.
You know-
That dog's been there a long, long time.
Yeah, I know, and it'll be used a lot. I can't say nobody uses it, and things like that, there's a lot of things that, there's probably people in the audience that have used our county airport. So, there, there's a certain amount of people that, you're not going to build something that a hundred percent of the people are going to use all the time, other than making the street out in front. And so there's always going to be a amount of limited usage or, or, or a lot of usage or something. But that, that's public money does, it builds things for the entire community, not just for one individual or for not, for one select group. I see a hand up in the back.
Yeah, hi, I just want to say, the past week, I've seen over a dozen boats that launched on the Rainier, and cut it apart. They're waiting for a while to see if somebody pulled out, they're buzzing, oh, pardon, down by terrorists, or what. I mean, over the past, I've seen that multiple times, some. And I know certain people that are from around here that live here, they will not try to go down here because they don't know if they have a parking spot. So we have planned a boat parking on that.
Well, we got a plan to boat park it.
Sure, sure.
I guess, my three words.
You have your hand up, man, thank you for your comment.
Me?
Yeah, she has her hand up.
Okay, if the ramp down here is, like you say, old and dangerous, and wouldn't it be, um, a good thing just to close it off altogether, and then everybody would have to find someplace else to stop their boat? Would that make it a new one?
Well, if it's possible, we're trying to eliminate the, the need for someone to launch a boat here.
But there are planning a ramp here that you can go, what, a mile, half a mile to either way from there?
A mile and a half.
That's not very far, so if it closes down, then they could be forced to go someplace else and get used to using those, and that would alleviate a lot of this. And then also, it was said in an article that I'm on, twenty-eight days, that there are plenty of other boat launches down there, so-
Well, I, I can't disagree with you, but the idea that making the means in City Rainier that they have a boat landing, uh, launching the area, may, can it bring people into this town?
Well, we're going to have, if you get the funding, we're going to have that.
Well, we, we have the funding for this. The other project is a whole different project.
Yes, it is.
We have some funding for that, but that's, that's a whole different project. So, so the idea of making the means for someone that would come into Rainier and be able to launch a boat, whether that is obsolete and inadequate, this would be better, no question in my mind.
But what's the advantage?
What is the advantage?
What's the advantage of using this one, say, if you use a rowboat?
The advantage?
If you're driving-
You just, I don't know why they wouldn't drive all the way up to the lake if they're fishing in Black Lake, but-
If you're driving a car.
They want to fish under the bridge or whatever they want to do, I, I don't know why they lose a particular spot. I just want to know that if there's one available, we have it.
And then also this cleaning station?
Okay, I recognize you. Thank you.
Uh, at the meeting, it was kind of sold to us that the old ramp was dangerous, I believe it was, John?
Yep.
Obsolete, congested. Why are you closing it down? I know, but I mean, they made a point of suggesting all that stuff as a reason for this. I mean, why didn't you close it down instead of?
Well, first of all, it's just not our choice to do that. The DNR doesn't have ramp.
No, no, they don't. You should talk to them and, I mean, I don't know. I mean, they're, they're-
We have gotten, and that's why they thought, that's why they, they agreed with the funding, and the LCCMR funding, that's why they got the money to build a new one.
Okay, I have another question. That road, that road that goes around Sharon's place, between the tracks and her length?
Yes.
Who owns that?
The city owns this, the two streets, the city-
I've heard different things, I've heard most county that owns that.
No, county owns this road here, the city owns the two streets.
Why, why isn't the depth and such rotten repair, and now it's all of a sudden it's a critical part of this whole program? There's a gap there, that if you don't swing almost onto the grass, you can bottom out hard easily. I mean, all of a sudden now it's critical?
That's because that height is coming up.
Yeah.
I guess it wasn't a problem, you know, it was a problem.
Dave.
I have two boats tied to my yacht right now. Neither one of them was launched in the Rainier. I don't need it on a safe in Rainier. The other ones are still going. Why are all these, put in another one down here? Why? Waste of money, terrible waste of money.
It's not another one, it's a different one, the other one will be closed. It's an obsolete one. an obsolete one. We're trying to update it. I think I've heard enough.
No, I, I would like to make some statements.
I'll give you one more minute. I'll give you one minute.
You didn't read those on the ten lights that I made for last week. But first, to the zoning, the zoning map and the zoning statutes, or whatever we call them, um, there are three parts of the zoning code that require that you have a conditional use public meeting, public hearing regarding unified land ordinance number one-five-three, two-point-zero-three, point-four, point-two, affected property owners notice. You have to notice, notify people within a hundred and fifty feet, whether they're going to be affected by any of this. Secondly, public buildings, services, and facilities require conditional use hearing, three-point-oh-four, point-three, point-one-five, and mixed-use developments, which would be a parking lot or a boat launch station, three-point-oh-four, point-three-point-two-oh. All of these require an initial use permit, a public hearing to handle capacity under the current zoning ordinance adopted by the city.
I don't want to tell you, because, you know, I can tell you--
Because you don't know--
Sue, let me say something. You act like, like nobody knew about this. I mean, I can't tell you how many times you interrupted at these council meetings to question that boat landing. Sharon certainly is the only one within a hundred and fifty feet of that place.
This parking lot, we are right next to it.
And, and so to say you don't know about it? Come on. What, what do you think, we're dumb?
Yeah, we didn't do it until 2019.
I'm closing, I'm closing, I'm closing the comment period now. And so, my recommendation on the boat landing, is there a recommendation to approve the boat landing or not?
I didn't want to do a vote on that.
Nothing to vote on yet.
No. Okay. All right, thank you guys for coming.
We have to have zoning ordinances, uh, variance in this boat landing. It'll go to the zoning committee. The zoning committee will have their open meeting. So people can kind of voice their opinion to the, uh, zoning committee. And once the zoning committee has made the decision, the zoning committee then brings it forward to the council. And then the council decides whether it's going to go through the variance or not go through or not. But it all starts with the zoning committee first, with following the city chairs, that, but we're supposed to, the zoning committee will vote, that they have to have their meeting, and it'll be a public meeting, be, put the paper published, one of the zoning, and then that's when it all comes about. Then you have your talk, whatever it is with the zoning committee, and then they decide whether the public wants to go or the zoning committee decides that it is not for the good of the city, then the zoning committee will bring it to the board and say, "Our recommendation is," and then we will decide off that. And that's how it works.
Right?
Okay. But there was a flaw, a big flaw, in this search process. Because, how many people? We don't even know how many people dropped. People are dropping off, coming up. I mean, it was all kinds of different people, all of them. And I, I looked at those minutes, and a lot of those people have a vested interest in getting rid of the--
President. All right, thank you, John.
I have a vested interest in this. I want the city of Rainier to be the city in the future for my grandchildren, your grandchildren.
But your business--
We're all--
John, John.
We're all going to be getting bought. And you're worrying about something that has no concern. We're not talking about the future of Rainier, develop, the life of Rainier, not some people that will go down. No, it's not right. We don't think it's going down. We don't like it. It's not good. We want to keep growing. The hot days, my children are staying here. I can remember, we used to be kids, we're going to fall over. When I grew up, there were two hundred kids there. I know, but not anymore.
Well, you better start procreating.
Not for me. I'm trying to get it so that my children or their grandchildren, other people's children, not--
I want to thank you, everybody, for their comments and coming to the meeting. And again, I know with some of these people, they have strong opinions about everything, but understand there's other opinions out there. So in future meetings, respect everybody's opinion.